Okay.
Yes, I'd like to call the May eighth meeting of the Jefferson County Plan Commission to order. First, we'll have roll call.
This is the public hearing?
It, yes, it'd be the public hearing portion of it.
Okay. Warren Oxer.
Here.
Mike Pittman.
Here.
Britt Copeland.
Here.
Ray Black.
Present.
Jenny Beverly here. Lisa Hammack.
Here.
David Ferguson.
Here.
Jean Riddle.
Here.
David Bremer.
Here.
Okay. We do have a quorum. We're gonna move on to a public hearing and an application for a zone map change or rezoning from R one residential and A G agricultural to general business filed by Marcus Chad's the raise. It is in connection with to correct zoning violations on parcel numbers thirty nine dash twelve dash zero one dash one zero zero dash zero six seven point zero 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 dash zero zero nine and three nine dash one two dash zero one dash one zero zero dash zero three nine point zero 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 dash zero zero nine. And Lynette, you want to give us a little bit of background on this and then we'll open it up to the applicant next?
I can. I don't know if I'd be better if Josh gave a little bit of history on it than me.
Either one, fine.
Just because of the violation of it was, but.
We had a couple of calls on the property about boats being stored on it and not being, and being ag and residential zone property. That's about all I've really got on it. I believe the original complaint that I had said that the original complaint that they had said that they had moved things around and it wasn't, wasn't really a problem for me at all.
And it couldn't be corrected through a conditional use because the type of use that they're wanting to use business wise is not a uh, conditional use or an exception in a agricultural, that particular agricultural or residential especially zone. So they've approached us to have the property rezoned instead. There it is. First, we'll ask people are making the application to come up and you tell us, give us a little background or share any information you want. I just ask whoever comes up to speak, they come up to the podium and give us their uh, name and address and then we can go from there. So it's Mr. Gray or whoever. All right.
So yeah, I'm Marcus Gray. And uh, yeah, the property has been used for last few years for boat storage and service down there. And that's about it. Yeah. So it's taken me a little while to get the application into here. So. Here now. Take questions, I guess, on it and buy the property or. But there's storage there. I mean, it's, it's used for as a boatyard pretty much. So yeah, mainly boats that are in there, some docks stored and serviced at the same time. So.
How long is this taking place? I mean?
Three, four years.
And we've had, the complaints weren't recent, the complaints went back. It was probably in place maybe somewhere between a year or two years maybe before the first complaint came in.
Been a couple of years.
Probably somewhere in that neighborhood, but uh, it's been they, we looked at other ways to resolve it with the possible conditional use and so forth and uh, had not been able to do that. Ended up, and then some of the delay also came about because we were in the middle of redoing all of our zoning ordinances. And we were waiting a little bit to see how we're gonna fit in with what classifications, because we changed a few changes there. When we got finished with those, it was still gonna be necessary to do a zoning change on it and such.
How many boats are we talking?
Right thirteen, well, I would say, right now. And then there's docks, I mean, this part of the stuff down there.
Okay. D N R put in a boat ramp down that too, right at the end of that roof property.
No, across from the property, south, south of the highway, you're on the north.
I think you were there before them, weren't you?
Chad, what was the property used before? Was it ag or was it just lots?
Mike Gray had it and he used tobacco barn and stored some equipment around there. Uh, that was the last owner. Yeah.
All right, we'll see what neighbors have to say.
Okay.
Anyone else that wants to step up and address concerns? All right. Please give us your name and.
My name's Suzette Wilson and I'm at two six eight South Brooksburg Main Street. That's the property right adjacent to it. Um, I have some pictures that I brought with me. The roads, there's two roads leading into where his, the boats would come in. One is this is the first picture and then this is my home up here. And we park our vehicles here. The road is only nine feet wide in this area. Okay? Then I have the other one coming in from the opposite direction and it's nine foot eight inches wide for the road. So it's very narrow roads to be bringing in larger uh, boats. Um, also, um, you know, everybody parks there. It is a residential area. And on behalf of the town of Brooksburg, which I am a board member on the town of Brooksburg, we are incorporated and we are responsible for the roads and the repairs and everything for the roads in Brooksburg and bringing in this additional weight and these additional trailers and this heavy things on the roads is just gonna cause damage, which causes a problem for the town. So um, as far as, I just don't think that being we're a small residential community, I think it's best to stay that way. If we open this up for one person to come in and change it to commercial, then there's a possibility somebody could buy another property in there and do the same thing. We don't want that.
All right, appreciate it. Any questions for?
Sorry, two questions.
Okay, thank you. Who else do we have?
I'm Vern Miller, label three, three, two, South Brooklyn Main Streets. So the property behind me doesn't, I can see the boats, but he has moved them back probably to half of the field. They're not as visible. But looking across the property, it's not even on his agenda. I've got a big problem with, because this looks like a boat scrapyard. They're putting a campground in. I don't see any permits.
That's on the other side of the highway. It may be something needs to address, but
Something needs to be addressed because.
This meeting or this agenda is not, not the time for that.
So I've put all this money into this home and I'm looking at a commercial boatyard all the way around. That's my only problem. So the reset value of my home is gonna be, if we build all this up around it, what's it gonna do to it? So that's my concern.
Two, two years.
It's three, three, two.
The property to me, right to the north east, I believe.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. Do we have anyone else? What are the board's thoughts on this?
Never should be wanting to, you're here to discuss the change of zoning.
Yeah, we change the own, yes. And we can have further discussion on it when we get into our, our meeting as such, and we'll bring it back up on the agenda for discussion then, but if there are any other questions of individuals and so forth.
Changing zoning in lieu of what?
Changing it from part of it's R one and part of it's ag and changing it from that to general business.
Variance would not work.
What's that?
Variance would not.
No, variant, conditional use would not work or an exception. I think that's what we call it now. Conditional use was the old. Does anyone else have anything from the audience?
I'm Jake Scudder. I own three hundred South Brooksburg, right across from Vern, pretty much Vern's front yard. My opinion, I just would hate to see it being turned into business just for the fact, you know, it's gonna be populated more and whatever I decide to do with my property, I just would rather keep it the way it is, but you know? So that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? Well, if not, then I'm gonna adjourn the hearing and I'll call the uh, Plan Commission meeting back to order. And you want another vote termination quorum? There's no need for that. We already determined the quorum, all right. So we'll move through and get, knock out some of our regular business fairly quickly. Everyone have a chance to look at our minutes from our March fifth meeting? And if so, if there's any needed changes or deletions? If not, I entertain a motion to approve the minutes. Well, first, we have second. I have second from Mr. Ferguson. All right, all those in favor? I vote same sign. Uh, minutes are approved. And then uh, the other business that we need to take care of is a formality on uh, appointing the secretary to the Plan Commission, uh, which has historically been the position that Lynette holds that position. The person who holds Lynette's position has done that both for the B Z A and the Plan Commission. And that appointment would be to Sarah Green that is taking Lynette's. And so uh, well, any thoughts on that? If so, I entertain a motion.
Make a motion.
Okay, have first, have second. All right, all those in favor? That passes. All right, then we'll move back uh, to discussion of the zoning map change. And uh, you know, I was looking through, we have some guidelines as far as what we're supposed to consider. Uh, when we look at a possible zoning hearing or change, we're supposed to consider as to how it fits with the Jefferson County Comprehensive Plan. The current conditions and character of the current structures and uses in the district. The most desirable use for which the land in each district is adapted. The conservation of property values throughout the jurisdiction and responsible development and growth as such. So, and then what our role is on this, we would make a, either a favorable, unfavorable or no recommendation on it. Those, that finding then would go to Jefferson County Commissioners who would have the final as such. So for example, if we make a unfavorable favorable recommendation, the commissioners could still vote differently in that and approve the zoning change. Same thing, we make favorable, they could vote and turn it down. So open to what the board's discussions on. One thing that I, that I personally tend to look at on these when I look at them is, you know, sometimes it's difficult because you have uh, someone there that's operating a business or they've already built the house and it's all sitting there in place and uh, it tends to make it a little more difficult to say no about at times. So I tend to try to look at it in the loop of if they were coming to me to ask about this zoning change before the business was ever there, what would my answer have been? And personally, usually I find that my answer wouldn't have been any different now than what it was then, or that's what it should have been. I don't know what the board's thoughts, you know, it's uh, I, I look at people that live on residential property that's next door to it. They know what the zoning was around them than when they bought it. And that uh, what is, what's the thoughts are on having a change after you've bought your home and it made your investment and so forth.
What kind of acreage are we talking about here as far as?
How many acres is there altogether, Mark? Do you know?
Three.
Three?
Probably three acres.
There's probably maybe an acre and a half of it that's fairly intense. Most of it's sitting, it's flood plain and sits empty. Yeah. For the most part. There's quite a bit of it in the flood plain, if not all of it.
But it could expand up to three acres for some storage possibly.
Hmm, there's, there's possibly, and they'd have to, you know, if there was any chance of flooding, they'd have to be moved out of that bottom area, but, you know.
I think we had talked a little bit about maybe getting an entrance off of fifty six. Is that still?
Yeah, they were uh, working on that. Maybe it was approved. Speed that's out there and uh, just hadn't pursued it since on fifty six. But it was in the works at one point and can be done.
You were asking the state for the approval for that?
Yes, yes. He did a couple of years ago. I'm not sure exactly where that's at. I think they'd have to widen the road though. It's pretty narrow in a little section of fifty six to where they have to turn off. I don't know.
One thing to add.
That would be the idea.
That in, in making the recommendation, whether it's favorable, unfavorable or none, uh, the Plan Commission can also make recommendations for conditions or commitments to go along with them. So but you know, when you send it up to the commissioners, it doesn't have to be just as applied. It could also be with recommendations from the Plan Commission.
What to the neighbors that are against it? What would a, a privacy fence, a solid fence around the property? What would that add an interest on fifty six? What would that do to you guys?
Personally, our house is sitting on the second story because we are in the flood plain. So it has to be a heck of a fence because we're gonna see it like our houses on.
Me, you're just gonna have that's in the know. And getting a, a road, I mean, I would be surprised if the state would allow another entrance off of Highway fifty six. It's a very busy and very dangerous area.
Yeah, and there's really, like, it's a drop off on both sides in that stretch of road. I can't imagine you could turn a boat on that road.
That's the drag strip.
Yeah, that's, I'm so scared when we turn into the house every night because people try to pass like, it's just a moment, like, it's gonna happen someday.
Board, have any further thoughts, discussions? Anyone want to make a motion?
I'm not a big pro, supporter of changing zoning, spot zoning. I mean, that's your open up the court room chair for you.
Let me make your motion.
Nope.
I understand making money off of property, obviously, that's what I like to do the same thing, but I do uh, also feel for the residents around there because when they built their homes or bought their homes, there wasn't a boat storage facility or um, docks and all those things around here. So um, that's just, that's a concern. Because it was residential area and agriculture. It was, but it was a tobacco barn. Not changing.
Warren, that place is in a flood plain. I think the whole property is. Uh, there is some D N R permitting that needs to be down there. Even a storage, storage fence building, any kind of fill or anything that would be put in there for driveway and whatnot, they just be permitting through D N R also.
But I know a lot of people, that farmers that farm, that live and farm in flood plain, they farm it anyway. They just hope that doesn't flood.
And you're gonna get your fencing approved too. Yeah, and then look like, which supplies some farmers.
Need a motion?
One, that taking it back to the maesters?
Well, we can make no recommendation and unfavorable or favorable.
I, I would like to see his table and, and have more information finding out if they can get a permit. I think that's probably the critical thing.
It would surprise me if, if the state would accommodate them, you know, with their own private.
I don't see a need to table. I think if they were going to have looked at it as far as having another road in or so forth, that should have been presented as part of this application for zoning change and so forth versus uh, kicking that down the, the road a little bit.
I personally can't make a recommendation, so I don't. There was a lot of boat storage on either side of the road too, this last one. I don't know how many boats were on the other side.
It sounds like maybe an issue that I'm going to be coming up somewhere else as well, yes.
Um, right across the road. Are you a, you said you're, you're on the board?
Yes.
Are you, were you, do you have, are you speaking for the board or are you just on the board?
I'm speaking for it. I mean, I know that, that uh, as far as um, and I don't know if people realize that Brooksburg is incorporated and we are responsible for all the street lines, we're responsible for all the roads and all that kind of stuff. I mean, and our biggest concern is the maintenance on our, the roads. We don't want it commercial anyhow because it's residential. We have a lot of children. There's, you know.
You're their spokesman then?
Yes.
I'll make a, since no one else will. I'll make a motion to be unfavorable.
Oh, sorry, which one?
Do we have a second?
I'll say.
In a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? I oppose. That's where we are. We're gonna make an unfavorable recommendation to the commissioners. Uh, do we have uh, any other business coming for the Plan Commission this evening?
You know.
Ye- ye- yes, you had, you wanted to bring up a little bit of discussion.
Yeah, um. I uh, got approached by quite a few people in the Lancaster Township area about, um, I guess in Jennings County, right on the property or county line, just outside of DuPont. They're putting in a uh, warehouse, suburban warehouse. And and they're, they're having a meeting now up at uh, up on the hill about it. But anyway, one thing that was brought to my attention or was asked to bring to the board's attention is um, Ripley County has, has some uh, ordinances in place uh, for this very reason. And I talked to some, uh, a person up at the, their board, at their, um, I don't remember his name right now. But anyway, he said that they uh, put this in place for the fact that uh, the bourbon was looking at Ripley County and they got this in place before then, and that's why they felt like they were looking at Jennings County. What, what it is, is the mold that comes off of the warehouses uh, gets to the neighbors and turns them black and what have you. And I've talked to a few companies down and businesses down in Kentucky where a lot of these warehouses are in. They do, that is a thing. It's not but I don't know how far it goes, but it, it does turn the houses black and, and, and that. I don't know if it's a health hazard, but it does turn your, their, the three mile radius. Is it, so you've done a little bit on it. So anyway, I, I brought the, the Ripley County ordinance. I gave it to Warren for consideration or at least discussion to see if we need to do anything in Jennings County or not. Um, our Jennings, Jefferson, yeah, Jennings County's already out. Yeah, we can't do much here. We can like, okay. It got pretty heated in Jennings County. Uh, I talked to one of the commissioners and they did have some meetings prior to, and of course, like anything else, nobody said a word until it was approved. And then it's, it's been pretty, pretty bad, pretty, pretty.
Has there been any kind of study on this mold?
There's been lots of studies done on it. It's, it's a big controversy in a lot of areas as such on barrel houses. And you can see, you can drive around the countryside just over towards La Grange and you'll see where the the signs are in the yard, you know, no barrel houses because of these types of issues. So it, it had been there. The only thing, I, I haven't looked specifically, but I'm ninety-nine percent certain under R U D Os for barrel storage, distillery type operation, it would have to fall into what we consider a heavy industrial zoned area. It is not a exception for an ag area. Look, that would be the main area. Regardless, it's going to have to be something that as is, that would come before the uh, either for a variance, if it is an exception, or it would have to come for a zoning change to have an area changed industrial. But I did not think that a full blown distillery was a, was an exception or use of an ag zone.
It has very, very into storage, but just storage itself and if they don't manufacture, it's just to store the barrel.
The storage is where they have the problems with the, yes, just storing it with the evaporation of the alcohol that causes the mold problems. You can get off the main drag and to the north side, just in any part of uh, uh, drive back where Seagram's and so forth in Lawrenceburg and Aurora, and it's obvious, you see it on the buildings heavy. Yeah, it's, it's a well-known.
And their main thing is it's near town DuPont and they just spent six hundred and some thousand dollars on a park that they don't want to turn black. Now granted, we can't do anything, even though if we passed anything in Jefferson, it's, it's in Jennings, but you know, in case there's another side, uh, but uh, that's what the purpose of this is.
To answer your question, if in an ag district, um, if they would need a special exception for, and just as a winery, brewery and distillery. And I can look in the definitions and see exactly what that would means, but it's not allowed to use without a special exception.
Okay. So it would have to come before the board. It's not something you could actually go in.
So I just wanted to bring it up and, and, and then that, in my discussion I had with Ripley County. Um, and then what they put in place. So you guys can take it for whatever you want to do with it.
And what did you say that they had put in place?
Uh, Warren has it.
Okay. Uh. It's, you know, they.
It, it's basically uh, in Lehman's term, they do, well, Warren, you just pass it around.
Is this inside or outside storage?
Inside.
But the buildings are bented. They're, they're fairly open for airflow through them and so forth.
And I, I haven't looked into this, but they said there is some, some suits other places. Uh, and they, they have one against them and they have the cleanup of the, and the cleaning of the houses and what have you in Kentucky, not necessarily tied to Seagulls.
Right. They, they mainly have need for mitigation and a plan covering an area so far around it, and they have some setbacks uh, thousand, three hundred and twenty feet from uh, active homes so forth, some things along those lines. That's something we can keep in mind and maybe look at, do a little more research on and see if we'd like to.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring it up because I got asked and it's, it's a pretty big deal up there on that end of the town.
It's unique, isn't it?
Yeah.
Well, there's, there's areas that they're, they're looking for them. They're, they're looking, they're short on barrel storage space. Because I have property at Hanover that is owned heavy industrial already. It would not require any zoning change and they'd approached, I'd been approached about something there and I said no because of the impact that I felt it would have on the surrounding area. Didn't open that door.
The Jennings County is eleven buildings, eleven warehouses. And uh, I don't know how much alcohol that would store, how many barrels. I think it's, it's fairly tall. It's like what you see in down in Kentucky and some of those bourbon warehouses down there.
And it's all in one location too.
And all in one location, yeah.
It's only, it's only wouldn't, wouldn't correct the problem. I mean, whether power was owned, it would, the problem would still be there.
Yeah, and then there's the state level because going across county lines.
And then in Kentucky, when they've had some problems with uh, uh, some fires at some barrels, it's, they had problems with the runoff, also running off into Kentucky River and having hundreds of thousands. It was a huge fish kill that came about as a result.
I guess the, the citizens, Jefferson County just don't want another one to happen to pop up because of the railroad track is what they feel like is drawing that to that location. Because they're opening up a spur supposedly in DuPont. Um, and they, you know, hear rumors and hearsay or whatever, but and that's one, you know, tied too close to the railroad.
And I wonder if they're wanting to help pay for like the town of the DuPont Fire Department type of thing that's not very far away or, I don't know what fire departments in Jennings County, but.
The U D O's got fifty thousand barrels.
Oh.
Hundred thousand, hundred thousand gallons or fifty thousand barrels permanent everywhere. But yeah, we, someone had, yeah, had been talking to us and so we were trying to figure out with the state, we could go to at least for emissions, because I don't think we can do anything as far as the emissions are uncertain, but.
Trying to figure out with the state, we could go to at least for emissions, because I don't think we can do anything as far as the emissions are uncertain, but. I guess the ordinance still.
At this point, are we going to have a need for a meeting next month?
So far, so far.
Okay, well, present time, unless something comes up, we plan commission probably will not be meeting. B Z A probably would though.
No, no, not yet.
Not yet, okay.
Well, no Tuesday, but not yet.
If no one else has anything else, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Boy, it's a lot easier, y'all in favor, a lot easier getting that motion.